As a premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the James City Service Authority Board of Directors' regular meeting. Mr. Powell, call to order, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Do you have any presentations tonight?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, public comments?
No ma'am.
Tonight's consent calendar consists of the following items, adoption of the minutes from the last meeting, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion for approval.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing, tonight, a resolution to lease space for the continued placement of a cellular array on the JCSA-owned water tower situated on property located at 5900 Warher Trail and further identified as JCC Real Estate Tax Map Number 3210100012B. Mr. Powell.
New Singular Wireless has leased space on the JCSA water tower since the year 2000. Current lease expires in 2025. New Singular has requested a new lease for 15 years. The proposed lease extension increases the yearly rent from $42,000 per year to $60,000 per year and includes a 3% yearly increase, plus a $30,000 administrative fee that's due to JCSA upon ratification of the extension. I want to thank the county attorney for renegotiating this agreement and note that he negotiated the highest monthly rate by far for any county or JCSA-owned property, and it's also very favorable regionally. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Any questions for staff? Can you open the public hearing? Is anybody for the public hearing?
No ma'am.
No speakers, we'll close the public hearing. Look to the board for discussion and our motion?
Move the adoption of the resolution.
Mr. Powell.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Null.
Aye. Board requests and directives, any comments? No? General manager's update, please.
Just briefly, I wanted to note that I sent you some information yesterday that indicated that water demand increased pretty significantly during the month of June. It has however moderated some during the month of July, so I want to stress that we haven't had any issue meeting demands during this time, but it was enough of a blip in June that I thought I would just bring it to your attention, but again, it seems to have moderated some in the past few days.
I think it was just the watering that was going on because of the heat?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Null, maybe I should have during the board request and directives, just mentioned some correspondence that I received from a constituent who lives in the Roberts District. As you know, the Roberts District has a number of residents who do not receive their water service from JCSA, they get it from Newport News Water Works, and I just wanted to make clear to folks that that would explain why they are currently receiving three bills, one from HRSD for sewer treatment, one from JCSA for the conveyance of the wastewater to the treatment facilities, and one from Newport News Water Works that would cover the cost of actually providing drinking water to the home.
Wow, I was not aware that they were getting three of them.
Yeah, I think.
Because I'm getting confused with the two.
People understand when there is a clear explanation about it, but there is, I think, concern that there's a sense that somehow or another this is going to result in higher costs. It shouldn't result in higher costs if your water usage remains the same.
Right, but most of our customers went from one bill to two, but the customers who were Newport News Water Works customers went from two bills to three.
Okay, yeah, I was not aware of the third bill, okay. Anything else? Can we adjourn? Motion to adjourn till 5:00 PM.
Don't move. On September 10.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
All opposed?
All right, thank you.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Call this regular meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Stevens, if you'll please call the roll.
Ma'am, Ms. Null?
Present.
Ms. Null represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powatin District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District and is vice chair to the board. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is chair to the board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens County Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thank you so much. If you will please join me in a moment of silence, and then we will say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you say a number between 1 and 10, you can have this magnet.
10.
All right, do we have speaker cards this evening? Thank you so much. Our first speaker is Max, and you're going to have to say your last name for me, please.
It's Fana Becker.
Say that one more time when you get up here so I can.
Fana Becker.
Okay, thank you, Max.
But Max is fine.
All right.
And Maxwell, if you're my grandmother.
Okay.
Put that out there. Okay. Greetings, my name is Max Fana Becker. I've made James City County my home for the last seven years. I'm a resident of Newtown and have been operating Triangle Skateboard Alliance, a locally-based nonprofit, for the last six. I'm here with Jimmy Thomas, he's a member of our board. I wanted to speak briefly in exuberant support of what I hope will be a great new government center located near the James City County Rec Center. But first, I'd like to tell you about our organization, Triangle Skateboard Alliance. We began in late 2017 with a mission to build and improve skate parks in our area, and to create a culture of service in the skateboarding community. We've hosted park cleanups, we pick it up, we don't talk it. We've hosted park cleanups, food drives, school supply drives, as well as partnered with other nonprofits like Faith Recovery, Christian Skaters, Inverse Ministries, and more. We've been awarded Williamsburg Community Foundation's Alt-Chuler Grant four times in the last five years, as well as the Treacle Grant to support the work that we do in the communities that we serve. In 2023, we earned the distinguished Private Sector Partner Award by Virginia Recreation and Parks Society. We were nominated by our partners at James City County Parks and Rec, so thanks, guys, we appreciate it. We helped to engage a community to build, fundraise, and we provided equipment for Middlesex County Skate Park, a new facility that opened in 2021. It was their first new park in over two decades. Here at home, we've grown our relationship and our partnership with James City County since 2018, including in adoptive park participation, six years of skate camps and clinics, park programming, with new offerings every single year. In short, we have operated always under the principle that we should create more goodwill than we consume, and over the years, our mission and impact have spread far beyond our original purpose of just expanding the little skate park over at Rec. Our annual skate camp has become a bright spot for many kids, not just in their summers, but in the entirety of their youths. We are helping to grow great citizens and stewards, as well as good skaters and young athletes. Our younger residents with ADHD and mild autism spectrum disorder who have struggled socially, or maybe failed to thrive in other camps, have come to thrive and learn through our programming, thanks in no small part to our volunteers and to our strong partnership with James City County Parks and Rec. We recently held a week-long skate camp in the first and hottest day of the summer, or week of the summer, and I wanted to share some of our responses from our parent surveys. This is by far and away our favorite camp offered. The folks making it possible are exceptional with the kids, organization, fun, creativity, and the culture and climate of support and growth that they create. This program is amazing. Another parent answered just simply what their child, what growth their child experienced during camp, and they just said belonging, and another parent said courage, and we really would have just been happy enough to hear that they became better skaters, but we're very humbled to know that we made a bigger difference. To continue and expand our impact in 2024, we're also offering youth and adult kayak programming at the newly renovated James City County Marina. We're going to teach kayaking basics, water safety and rescue, as well as marine navigation for interested residents and non-residents. I did hear some commentary not long ago about the spend on that marina, so I just wanted to say, I promise we're going to put it to really good use as residents. Sorry, cheeky. We passionately believe that our locality has so much to offer in the realm of the outdoors for residents and tourists alike, and we're eager to help connect them to it. So to bring this back around, we are excited about the future of James City County and of the government center that will support her and her infrastructure, but we want to make sure that there continues to be a bright future for us and for skateboarding in James City County. So as capital improvement plans are reviewed, we'd ask that you remember the good work that we do for our sport and for our young residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for all your public service, we appreciate it. Peg Borman?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. Purse, Mr. Freunheimer, ladies and gentlemen, in case I missed anybody. I'm Peg Borman residing at 17 Settlers Lane downtown Lightfoot, and as per usual, I don't want to disappoint anybody, I'm here to talk trash, and for that, but I gave each one of you something that says not allowed, trash talk is not allowed, so please don't hold me that at tonight, okay? But I thought you might need a fan a little bit, it's been rather hot lately, so anyway. Recently, I had an opportunity to attend a law enforcement forum, and James City, Williamsburg, York County, and the state police were all there at that forum. And my question to them was, who is responsible for cleaning up the debris left after car crashes? And all of them answered that it's a tow truck driver. Well, what if there's no towing service called? And I've been seeing a lot of debris left over, it seems like from minor crashes, but once it gets in the traffic, it gets beat up into little pieces. So it's something for us to think about, and, because nobody seems to know who's supposed to pick that up after you had no tow service, or even the police are not called always. So, don't you think that's something we can ponder over? It's quite dangerous for someone to get out there and try to pick that up, and with all the traffic and all of that, but it's a hazard on the road, so we need to think about that. Maybe y'all have an answer to that, that question. I'm hoping that somebody will at least think about it and decide who's to blame or who's responsible. So, maybe we can all just look into that. I plan on bringing that up at our meeting on Thursday night for the Clean County Commission. I thank all of you for diligently helping to keep our county clean. I've been told by folks that we don't have much trash on the roads. Of course, some of us don't think that, but compared to other places in the state and other states around us, there seems to be a lot of trash. So it makes me feel warm and fuzzy that our visitors think we're doing a pretty good job cleaning up, but there's a lot of people that are complaining about it. You see it on social media and Nextdoor Neighbor, but do you see any of them out there picking it up? I don't see them out there, and the county's having to pay for that cleanup. So, thank you for listening to me talking trash again. Thank you.
You. Chris Henderson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Stevens, Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I want to thank Peg for her work over the decades in James City County to make our community cleaner. It's rare that you find somebody with that type of dedication and commitment to a particular type of community service, so Peg, you should be applauded for all that you do for us. My point in speaking today is to talk about something that's the subject of a closed session later, which is the potential separation of the Williamsburg-James City County school system, and I, after reviewing the information, I'm inclined to support the separation. And I say that for several reasons, but primarily because James City County then will be able to control and direct its own system without regard to the needs and wants of the city of Williamsburg. The makeup of their student body is different in terms of its academic performance. Their own studies showed that they lagged in performance on standardized tests. And so if we are trying to achieve the highest level of performance for James City County students, then additional resources can be directed to the smaller cohort of struggling students that make up about 23% of the James City County student body versus 43 or 45% of the city of Williamsburg that lag behind in the standards of learning. I know that there has been some discussion about converting Lafayette High School into a middle school and perhaps building a new high school. I think that's worthy of consideration. I would point out that demographics are kind of in our favor in that after 2027, we're expecting to see a gradual decline in enrollment over time. So it's not as if we're going to be experiencing a continuing demand for additional new buildings beyond what we would build in order to facilitate the separation. I also know that we acquired land joining this complex, and we could build a middle school that could replace the two that are in Williamsburg that would serve the constituency that's currently being served by those two facilities. Next, I want to talk to you about the municipal complex, which has an impact potentially on discussions with regard to the school system and how we might fund a new middle or high school. And in looking at the municipal complex, I found that the underlying analysis of the return on investment and savings with regard to building a new facility is significantly flawed. A statement was made that the buildings, these buildings as they exist, would have significant value in the commercial real estate market. These are special purpose buildings and would have no value to someone other than James City County. They are a liability. So the net result is not land plus building as your analysis showed, it's actually land value minus demolition cost is the net-net. And with regard to any savings from operations, with the county expanding its footprint, there will be no savings in operating expenses. Operating expenses will go up as a result of the increase in gross square footage occupied by the county. I also want to address the PPEA process, and I consider myself to be a very well-informed citizen, but it was news to me that James City County had offered a PPEA opportunity. Most jurisdictions in which I work, if they have a PPEA opportunity, they advertise it, they host open houses, they actually recruit developers to come and make submittals rather than having a somewhat closed process. I understand it was advertised, but we now really don't have a paper of record. So I just want to encourage you to open it up to additional people for design and for construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Rice?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Linda Rice, 2394 Forge Road. What I'd like to comment on, well, I'd like to say two things. First of all, thank you for your support of the road improvements in Towano, stormwater improvements as well. That has been very welcome. It has been, gosh, proposed, I think, for several years, so it is very nice to see that that has finally come to fruition. However, there is another issue that really needs to be addressed, and maybe it is being addressed, but I had heard, and this is literally months ago, that VDOT was aware of the new. That has been very welcome. It has been, gosh, proposed, I think, for several years. So it is very nice to see that that has finally come to fruition. However, there is another issue that really needs to be addressed, and maybe it is being addressed. But I had heard, and this is literally months ago, that VDOT was aware of the need for a traffic signal at the intersection of Forge and Richmond Road around 60. And I will tell you, it is very necessary that we have a study done so that hopefully it will proceed to have a traffic signal established at that intersection. It's a very, it's a very dangerous intersection, especially for, we have a lot of horses, as you guys know, on Forge Road, people hauling horse trailers. And I will tell you, when I was doing that myself, the traffic congestion wasn't quite as bad as it is now. And so when you're trying to, I don't know how familiar, I know some of you are very familiar, Mike is very familiar. So when you're trying to turn from Forge, a left turn from Forge onto Route 60 going west, it can be challenging at times because you have traffic coming down from the Anderson's Corner area. So you have to keep alert to that. You may have other traffic coming westbound on Route 60 roughly from the Croker Road area. So needless to say, you have to really be quite alert if you're going to get that trailer across that very narrow median and have success without getting into an accident. Now, I know there are alternatives. Nevertheless, beyond the horse trailer issue, there's also a traffic issue. And at certain times, and I never thought I would see this, but I am seeing it now, traffic does back up even, to some extent, on Forge Road as people are either trying to make left turns to go 60 going west, or even in some cases, to make the right turn. So I guess what I'm asking you is, if in fact, their, VDOT has established a timeframe for this study, which they had indicated, I think, months and months ago, maybe years ago, now that they would do it at the conclusion of the road improvements, I would really ask you guys to urge them to get with it and to finish that study as soon as possible so that we can determine if, in fact, the light is going to come or not. So thank you.
Eneth Fletcher.
Good evening.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Do my best to follow these knowledgeable and impactful speakers. You may remember me. I was here in May to speak to the special use permit application for renting out some rooms in my home at 7146 Little Creek Dam Road. That was pushed to today's meeting. So I'm back here. Just, I'll try and keep it short, but give a quick summary of our application. We're applying to occasionally rent out a guest room in our home a few days a month to a maximum of two people at a time. My wife and I have two young children. We live full-time at this home. I work from home. My wife is a stay-at-home mother. So there's somebody at home nearly all the time. We live on four acres. We're surrounded by forest. We're at least, I'd say, 400 feet from the nearest neighbor. So, you know, there's unlikely to impact any of our neighbors. I'll emphasize that if renting a room were to ever cause an issue for our neighbors, for anybody else, for the county, we'd obviously address that as quickly as possible. We live there, so we don't want any problems. This is our home. Our priority, like I said, it's always going to be the safety and well-being of our family, followed by good relationships with our neighbors. Now, this guest room, it's mostly for friends and family. My parents live out of state. My wife's parents live out of state. But it really would make a difference for us to be able to rent out these rooms. The extra income is important to us. I'll also just mention, as you know, you know, we've invested a significant amount of time and what, for us, is a significant amount of money into the application process. So, you know, we're looking forward to knowing whether we're going to be able to move ahead and rent out those rooms. I, you know, from what I've read of, the planning commission has approved this. I don't see a significant reason why it should not be approved. So I will just emphasize that the permit as drafted would expire in 2027. So my understanding is it would come before the board again and could be reassessed, you know. So with all of that, I kindly urge you to approve the permit today. Thank you.
All right. We have no consent calendar this evening. That brings us to our public hearings. Our PC rep this evening is Steve Rogers. So our first item is an ordinance to amend Appendix A/ B schedule for development-related permits. Tony, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am here tonight to present an ordinance to amend and re-ordain the code of James City County by amending Appendix A, the fee schedule for development-related permits. This is really a housekeeping measure that will only address formatting changes to align the code references to the new Chapter Eight for the Stormwater Resource Protection Division fees. So it only fixes sections and numbering references. There are no changes to the fees associated with this amendment. To ensure consistency with the new Chapter Eight Erosion and Stormwater Management Ordinance, we recommend adoption of the attached ordinance.
So much. Are there questions for staff? All right. Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Are there any public?
No ma'am.
Close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Move the adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our next is AFD 24-0001, 2394 Forge Road, Mill Creek AFD Edition. Roberta, good afternoon to give the staff presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Ms. Linda Rice has applied on behalf of the Mr. John J. and Ms. Linda L. Rice Trust to add approximately 16.81 acres of land to the Mill Creek Agricultural and Forested District. The subject property is located outside of the primary service area at 2394 Forge Road. It's zoned A1, general agricultural, and is designated rural lands by the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. A portion of the land is currently in use as pasture, and most of the remaining property is forested and proposed to stay as such. The subject property is within one mile of the core parcels in the Mill Creek AFD and is contiguous with other parcels currently in the district. If this application is approved, the Mill Creek AFD will consist of approximately 3,406 acres. At its April 18th meeting, the AFD Advisory Committee voted 4-3 to recommend approval of this request. And at its June 5th meeting, the Planning Commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of this request to the Board of Supervisors. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets all state and local requirements for inclusion in the Mill Creek AFD and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this addition, subject to the conditions of the proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions you have. And the applicant is here with us as well tonight.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Yeah, the only question I had, I don't know if this is more appropriate for staff or for the Planning Commission, but the AFD Committee voted 4 to 3. Was there much discussion or of why the 3 voted against it?
Yes, I can answer that. The AFD Committee members had a discussion about the land-use taxation program and whether or not the applicant would be seeking to take advantage of that. Again, that is a separate program and really not applicable to our consideration. So I didn't include that.
Answer my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Rogers.
Evening, Madam Chair and others. Really, Ms. Sulev captured it very well. We focused on the idea that it sort of seemed like infill that was adjacent to other properties. It completed a picture that is desirable and useful. And we had no trouble. We actually did discuss what was that 4-3 about and got the same explanation. Thank you. There were no comments against, no public comments against the proposal. A motion was made, and we voted 6-0 in support. So if there are no other questions for me, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rogers? All right. Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers? Okay. Linda Rice.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and members of the board. Linda Rice, 2394 Forge Road. Yeah, I come before you tonight for several reasons. One, obviously, I am seeking approval for my property, my husband is deceased, to become part of the AFD. As the planner indicated and Planning Commission member indicated, it is adjacent to several other properties in the Mill Creek AFD. I have spent probably close now, I guess, to 20 years, along with, I might add, several other residents on Forge Road, highlighting the importance of protecting the rural lands and also the historic nature of Forge Road. And as I've told many people, I do think Forge Road is probably the prettiest road in James City County. I realize some people may disagree with that. But I've lived on Forge Road for, gosh, about 46 years. So I can say that, I think, pretty definitively. At any rate, I would hope you would approve the application. I know my husband as well would be very pleased if the property could become part of this AFD. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other speaker cards?
No ma'am.
I will close the public hearing. I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. That brings us to AFD 24-0002-10135, Fire Tower Road, Barn Swamp AFD Edition. Tess Lynch, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Ms. Nancy Bradshaw has applied to enroll approximately 50.14 acres of land located at 10135 Fire Tower Road into the Barn Swamp AFD. The parcel is zoned A1, general agricultural, and designated rural lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. The parcel is located within one mile of the core of the Barn Swamp AFD and is directly adjacent to other parcels in the district. Much of the property is forested, and there is a residence on the property. The AFD Advisory Committee recommended approval of the application by a vote of 6 to 2 to 0, with Mr. Bradshaw and Ms. Knoll abstaining, at its April 18th, 2024 meeting. At its June 5th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of 6 to 0. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets all state and local requirements for inclusion in the Barn Swamp AFD and recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed addition to the Board of Supervisors. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff this time? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rogers.
And thank you. This may sound a little familiar, but it was very much the same, except this is even a much, a much larger piece of infill. This was 50 acres instead of the 16 or the 18 we just addressed. There was some discussion about trying to get a, you know, these corridors are basically creatures can actually move from one parcel to the next. This one is adjacent and helps, helps towards that end and towards the preservation of rural lands in our county. No one spoke against this proposal when we opened up the discussion, and a motion carried 6-0 in the Planning Commission. We're very excited about it. Any questions for me?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will open the public hearing. Are there any speaker cards? I will close the public hearing, look to the board for discussion and/or a motion. A motion to approve. Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to SUP 24-0009, Lovett 64 Commerce Center. That's formerly the Hazelwood Farms, the Enterprise Center. SUP amendment. Tess is back up.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mr. Ben Swift of Lovett Industrial has submitted a request to amend the existing special use permit condition as it applies to Building Number 6. This would change the parking layout to place the employee parking lot between the Building and Leisure Road and the loading docks and semi-trailer parking to be interior to the industrial development. This amendment would not increase the approved square footage or change the use on site. The subject property is located at 275 Old Stage Road, zoned EO, economic opportunity, classified as economic opportunity on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, and is located inside the primary service area. The initial condition was approved prior to finalization of proposed building layouts. Upon receipt of further information regarding plans for the site, staff feels the SUP amendment is appropriate. Staff finds the proposal compatible with surrounding zoning and development and recommended use within the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, though it is not fully consistent with the county's character design guidelines. However, staff has proposed an amendment to the SUP condition to mitigate this lack of consistency that would require an increased evergreen percentage in the landscape buffer to shield view of the cars from Leisure Road. In light of this, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application. At its June 5th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of 6 to 0. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is available as well.
Questions? Right. Thank you. Mr. Rogers.
Evening once again. On this particular one, the Planning Commission members were really quite happy to see the ultimate result that would come from this proposal, if you all agreed to support it, which would be to take large trucks and loading docks, perhaps visible buffer or no, from the main road and move them to the interior of the site. Because we understood that we were going to put smaller, lower-profile cars and SUVs toward the public, higher vehicles and commercial trailers and such, and the noise they make on the interior of the site. And so, oh, and in this case, there were people who spoke. And they spoke in favor of it, including the adjoining neighbor of Stage Road made an impassioned plea as to why she would much prefer to look at vegetation and low-profile cars as opposed to a vista of perhaps trailers and trucks. A motion was made, and it carried 6-0 in favor. Other questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Rogers? All right. Thank you so much. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we do have speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Ben Swift. Good evening.
Chair and members of the board, I think it was well-covered by staff, but just, I don't mean to be redundant, but the purpose of this was that the way the proffers and SUP initially was written, it had a bit of a conflict with the way industrial buildings are laid out, where for safety reasons and circulation purposes, the employee parking is in front of the building and the loading and truck operations are in the rear. And it ended up being that the parking, you know, which would be, it is against the front of the building. And I think the intent was to have the front and more appealing part of the building face the neighbors. And so this is what this amendment is for, is to be able to provide a much better view to the neighbors and to the public along the road, rather than looking at the truck court or truck parking. But happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Second speaker is Chris Henderson. Good evening again.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I had the pleasure of working with Sam Hazelwood during the time that he was thinking about the development of the property and worked with his children on the master plan for the entire development that fulfilled Sam's wishes with regard to what would happen at the interchange. And I think with this development, we have an opportunity to get James City County in the game for high bay warehouse and distribution and manufacturing. James City County is not really a player in that market because we don't have that space readily available. There was a new project down in Grove that opened, I think, in December, and I think that's coming along in terms of its leasing. But the opportunity here, and I would encourage the and I would encourage the county to think about opening up some sightlines to Interstate 64. I know that that's generally forbidden, but our competitors in New Kent County and other places allow developers to open sightlines so that their buildings can be seen along 64. You just have to drive up past the rest area, and you can see an industrial building under construction, I think for Advance Auto, and there'll also be a Buc-E's that's coming that'll have some sightlines. So we want to take advantage of our interstate interchange locations and try to maximize those income earning opportunities so that we maximize the development potential, the investment potential, the employment potential. And that's good for business, and that's good for James City County. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker cards? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing, look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to SUP 240001-7146, Little Creek Dam Road Rental of Rooms. Terry Costello, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. At its meeting on May 14, 2024, the Board of Supervisors postponed action on this item until tonight's meeting. Due to new legislation enacted by the Virginia General Assembly, special use permits may now include a period of validity. Therefore, staff has replaced condition number seven that required a compliance review and added the condition with a validity date of December 31, 2027. This condition means that should the applicants wish to continue the use after December 31, 2027, an amendment to the SUP will have to be approved before this date. Staff continues to find the proposed use will not negatively impact surrounding property or development, nor is it expected to negatively impact level of service for roads or other public services. While staff believes that this location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds the proposal not fully consistent with the Comprehensive Plan recommendations for short-term rentals. Therefore, staff cannot recommend approval of this application. Should the Board of Supervisors recommend approval of this application, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for staff? For the applicant? All right, with that, thank you so much. I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That moves us to board request and directives. Ms. Knoll?
I don't think I've done anything since the last meeting. I've had so much time up, I don't know what I'm doing. Now, other than the meetings that I always go to, I think, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay.
Just two quick things. The Third Annual Journey for Racial Healing took place in late June, and it was a very inspiring event and included a talk by a descendant of Robert E. Lee, who happens to be an African-American minister from North Carolina. It was a very moving ceremony and a very thoughtful crowd of folks attended, and just wanted to mention that. And then on June 27, Ms. Eisenhour and I traveled to Culpeper and attended the meeting of the Coalition of High Growth Communities at Old House Winery, which was a great venue that we've used now for a few years. And it was a very well-attended event with a number of interesting topics. But two of the speakers were not able to attend at the last moment, but they are going to make themselves available for a Zoom presentation each, and you'll all be invited to that if you choose. One is a representative from VDOT to talk about local government opportunities to exercise greater autonomy on some decisions, or at least more influence. And the other presentation was the head of the Virginia Home Builders Association to talk about some of the issues that they see coming forward in the General Assembly. So just wanted to mention that to you. One other thing I did want to mention is kind of a question for staff to look into. I've gotten a number of requests from residents in Kingsmill about the issue of the citing of homes in relation to cell towers. And we have a policy which affects the determination of placement of new cell towers. Their question was, should that same standard not apply to the placement of new residences in terms of distance to cell tower, existing cell towers? And so I would just ask if we could get a short, not a very detailed overview at this point, but just a question of the basis for the 400-foot buffer that we currently require for cell towers to be placed near residences and how that might impact decisions in terms of whether it affects the property values of somebody who would choose to hold, to purchase a parcel of land in which they wanted to put a home, but where that home would then be within 400 feet of the cell tower, thereby perhaps limiting or reducing the value of the property? And questions related to whether there is, what's the justification for the 400 feet? And is it something that would apply whether a home is existing or a new home is being proposed? So those are just kind of the things. And I'll follow this up with a brief explanation of what I'm looking for in that regard. But just wanted to let the board know that I'm going to ask that question of staff.
Thank you.
Yes, I was very pleased to see Max here today because he called me and asked me to come out and take a look at the kids' camp. And I went out at about, early, earlier in the morning when it wasn't quite as hot, but on the Friday, the last day. And it was very impressive to see these young kids zipping around. Some of them as young as six years old, some up teenagers. And they all seemed to be having a wonderful time and cooperating, and it was very impressive. So I'm glad to see he was here. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the James City County Resolves. And I don't know whether anybody is aware of it or not, but we just held the very first Virginia 250th Celebration in James City County. And it was hosted by the Sons of the American Revolution. I happen to be a member. And it was James City County Parks and Rec. And this commemorates the signing of the James City County Resolves on the 1st of July, 1774. And it was held, if I can remember, look up my notes here. It was actually held up in a, in a, an area of, 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 an ordinary tavern that was in James City County that probably lies right now somewhere between Panera and Wawa. So we decided to put it at Freedom Park. And I think it was a lot better being out there than it was in the parking lot. But it was important, I think, here's the color guard that had it. And you go ahead and show the next picture if you will. Just a little bit of background. In the spring of 1774, citizens of James City County were, while chafing at the Navigation Acts, which forced colonists to trade from a disadvantaged position with only with Great Britain, were generally content that, but as they knew the system and wanted peace. However, sedition and treason against the British Crown were rife in James City County. And by mid-June, 1974, certain members of the county's freeholders, men eligible to vote, met at Ishams Allen's Ordinary to discuss the British Parliament's coercive acts of 1774. Essentially, these were the ones that were passed against Boston in response to the 1773 Boston Tea Party. And there were a whole series of acts that were done there. But it's interesting that these folks got together and they, they passed a resolution worthy of a Board of Supervisors. And it said, "Resolved that we will not import any article, whatever, from Great Britain. Resolved that we will stop all our exports to Great Britain after such a day as shall be appointed by the general meeting on the 1st of August next. Resolved that the subscription paper be handed about among the people of James City County to raise money, corn, wheat, and any other commodity which may be most agreeable to the subscriber for the relief of the people of Boston. Resolved that in order to testify our gratitude to the late worthy representatives and our entire approbation of their conduct in the late General Assembly, it is the unanimous opinion of this meeting that they be thanked for their former service and that Robert Carter Nicholas Esquire be pleased to accept of a treat from the freeholders of the county on that day appointed for the election of Burgess's." So they were, they were out in the forefront. And I never knew that until this ceremony. So if you would, we had a nice reclaim ceremony. And if you want to show the last one, there we go. Everybody, me, was in uniform. And they did their very first live fire exercise. So I was very impressed with the group. And I think we can look forward to some more really very interesting events like this coming up. And then I called this morning very late to go to a ribbon cutting. And I want to thank Theresa for finally getting to me because I went over and upstairs in the Langley Federal Credit Union Building, there's a, Ed Mark is a group that has moved in and taken over the offices. And they are essentially a charity that deals with children's hospice. And they have been on the South Side for about 46 years, and they're expanding their footprint into this, into this area, into James City County. And the impressive thing is that families are never billed for any support that they get from this organization. And the mission is to ease the trauma of child illness or death. And I was, I've never seen so many people at a ribbon cutting in the entire time I've been on the Board of Supervisors. So it was impressive.
They're a really impressive organization.
They are.
Yeah, I hope we'll get, first of all, the 250th is really
Getting nice.
Big, and I hope we can start really ramping it up. And so any information that you get and can pass along, I'd really appreciate it. Briefly, Ed Harris, the new CEO for Visit Williamsburg, had his first Tourism Council meeting today. It was held out at Busch Gardens. Kevin Limke and his staff were the hosts and just did a great job. I want to try to get Ed here, Scott, if we can, so we can get him introduced in the community. And he has an opportunity to meet my colleagues if he hasn't had a chance to do that yet and meet members of the James City County team. I did ask that if we could possibly get someone from the fire department to come out and do a brief talk to us at our next meeting about lightning and storm safety. We are surrounded by water. We have been fortunate this year that we have not had a drowning that I'm aware of. But I just think it's, as much as we can talk about being safe around water and lightning and storms, the better. Fourth of July, we had a great parade in First Colony. Station Five came out. They brought an ambulance and a fire truck. I really appreciate that. Had a very tall member of Station Five who was related to one of the people up here. Your nephew was out there and did a great job. And so really appreciated that. And then I've talked about this one other time. I just want to talk about it one more time about the Colonial K-9 Classic that's going to be held out at Jamestown Event Beach, Jamestown Beach Event Park, yes. September 13 through the 15. This K-9 Classic is part of Chesapeake Dock Dogs. And it's, it's diving. It's dogs jumping, flying, splashing, competing. I had never heard of this before until I met with Rebecca, who owns Muddy Marley's and is also on our economic development. And it is incredible. They, they held an event in Richmond recently that was attended by hundreds of people. So I think it's going to be really cool for this area. So I'm hoping that we can get some interest and get some people out there. But I think it's going to be really cool. So we, Ms. Knoll and I leave tomorrow along with our Assistant County Administrator Reinheimer and our Chief Financial Person, Ms. McCarthy, to head to the National Association of Counties Conference. So we're really excited about that. And we'll bring back all kinds of interesting information, so.
Not hot and humid enough for you here.
No, yeah, we got to go south. But we'll be inside and doing a lot of walking. So anyway, appreciate the support to be able to do that. That brings us to the reports of the county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a couple items. I do want to mention heat, and summer is here. And just remind our residents that we need to look after each other. If you see a child or an animal in a car by themselves, we need to make sure they are not in distress. And if you're not sure what to do and you can't open the door, calling 911 is the right response. So please look for that. It does happen. A lot of times it's accidental, but it doesn't take long for either pet or child to have a serious problem and not be able to recover. So please look after that. The other part is staying cooled individually. We need to look after ourselves and our neighbors, check on one another, those you know, and just make sure, if you don't, need to wait till you get thirsty. You're supposed to drink and drink and drink during these hot times to stay hydrated and look after yourselves. And then on the really hot days, we do allow anybody into our rec center who doesn't have a place to go and get into an air-conditioned space. They can come to our rec center and use that as a cooling location as well. Ms. Larson mentioned hurricane or storms, and we will come back and talk about storms in general and lightning strikes and other things in our community. But just awareness of hurricane season with the impact in Texas. And again, we haven't had it this time, but we certainly are subject to that and for each of us to sort of be prepared. Be able to take care of you and your family for three days. That's pets, medicines, all those things. Have a plan, know what you're going to do, and be ready before it arrives. So more to come. Thank you.
Appreciate that. May I have a motion to enter closed sessions, closed session for the following items? Consideration of a personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-37. Wait, excuse me, just a moment. Before I do that, wouldn't anyone like a recess prior to going into closed session? Okay, just want to make sure. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, A, Appointment Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board; B, Appointments Colonial Behavior Health Board of Directors; C, Appointments Williamsburg Area Arts Commission; D, Appointment Social Services Advisory Board; 2, Discussion of the Award of a Public Contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the contract for the joint operation of schools between the county and the city of Williamsburg and pertaining to the contract between the county, York County, and the city of Williamsburg for the joint operation of Williamsburg Regional Library System. That is the motion. Is there a motion?
Move to a closed session on those items.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Who she cares.
I'm out of closed session. May I have a motion to certify?
I'm sure I would certify that we only moved to certify that we only spoke about those items. We indicated we'd speak up about going into closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Noel?
Aye.
Mr. Epple?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. Mr. Eisenhour?
Okay, I will move that we make the following appointments. To the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board, the Honorable Judge Met Danielson to fill the balance of a vacated term expiring on October 24th, 2026. To the Colonial Behavioral Health Board, recommend that we appoint Chief Ash and Ms. Danielle Wells reappointed beginning July 1st, 2024 for a three-year term that will expire June 30th, 2027. And for the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission, we would reappoint Mr. Nick Vretos and I'll make a new appointment of Ms. Melanie Matheny for terms starting July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2027. And finally, for the Social Services Advisory Board, recommend that we reappoint Mr. Chris Howard and Ms. Kimmich Credle, I guess, for another four-year term that expires on June 30th, 2028.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Noel?
Aye.
Mr. Epple?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Who cares?
May I have a motion to adjourn until 1:00 PM on July 23rd, 2024 for the business meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Noel?
Aye.
Mr. Epple?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. We're adjourned.